Melton.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for pledge allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Brinker-Hart.
Please be seated. So there are many important and serious issues we as a council deal with. For example, we're in the process of considering the 2026 budget and CIP, or the safety of our children on the streets as they go back to school. But I'll leave that for next week and Councilmember Melton because it always seems, I don't know how, but it always seems to fall on her week for opening comments. And we should also recognize that tonight is National Night Out. But every once in a while, I think we need to take a step back and enjoy a little bit of humor. So that's the route that I'm taking today. August 5th is National Underwear Day. I realize that that might be a risque subject to bring up at city council. After all, speaking in public about one's preference for the type and material of one's undergarments is personal. So in the spirit of National Underwear Day, I will be brief.
An affidavit publication is on file and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate and conduct our business, we ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. Reminder that you will have three minutes to speak on an agenda item. Please stay on topic. If you would like your comments entered into the public record, you can email the city clerk's office at cityclerk@cityofomaha.org. Councilmembers receive these emails and we read them. Finally, councilmembers may ask members of the audience back up for clarifying questions, but not for extra time to speak.
Item six, to consider a Class D liquor license for South Side Market and Spirits located at 2001 Vinson Street.
I'll open the public hearing on item number six. I believe the applicant is here by Zoom today, Mr. Kelly.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I just know the applicant is voluntarily prohibiting sales of 50 milliliters or less with hard liquor and beer products less than 16 ounces. So with that, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents for item number six? Seeing none, is there any opponents for item six? Please come down.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Michael Marcello, 2025 Deer Park. Where do we start? Our neighborhood is a blighted area. We have a homeless problem. We have a drug abuse problem in our neighborhood. I realize we're not going to sell fireball shooters or things like that, but that will just probably result in people buying larger volumes of alcohol. That neighborhood, our neighborhood already has, I believe, six liquor licenses within two blocks of that address. When do we have enough? There is also, within 500 feet, a substance abuse facility. And we should probably all be cognizant that those folks take a break from their daily treatment and wander the neighborhood. I'm just concerned for all of us. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents here to item number six? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
I want to make an amendment to amend this to include, prohibit the sale of 50 milliliter or less of any singles and 16 ounces or less. Let me rephrase that. I wasn't clear enough. So I want to amend this to include prohibiting the sale of any liquor or beer 50 milliliter or less and any singles 16 ounces or less.
We have a motion and a second to amend for 50 milliliters and less. Sorry, what Ron said, 50 milliliters less and 16 ounce. We good? Mr. Kelly, do you agree to that motion by Mr. Hug?
We do.
Okay, thank you. No further lights. We have a motion and a second. Row call.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Motion as amended. Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
Yeah, I want to make, so I make a motion to approve as amended.
Motion and a second, no further lights, row call.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item seven is a special designated liquor license application for Cablagada Zapata, and the applicant is actually requesting to withdraw this item.
Got a motion and a second to withdraw, row call.
Roe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item eight, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Crescent Moon Ale House located at 3578 Farnum Street for an outdoor concert on September 26th and 27th from noon to midnight with music until midnight.
I will open the public hearing on item number eight. Is there any proponents here today? The applicant, good afternoon.
Yes, Candace Gladwin, 1504 North 113th Plaza, Omaha 68154. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. This is in my district and it's, if I'm remembering correct, the 24th Annual Oktoberfest.
Correct.
You want to give us a little snapshot of the great event that I usually get up to every year?
Um, yeah, it's a two-day, it opens on Friday at 4:00 PM. We have bands each day. Friday, a band and then a DJ in the evening. And then Saturday, two live polka bands, one in the afternoon, one in the early evening, and then the same DJ in the evening. We'll have some contests, like a pretzel toss, things like that. It is family-friendly during the day. We encourage people to bring their kids out, have fun in the beer garden, and then at nine o'clock it is adult only.
And are you going to, college football game or two maybe going on? Do you have some TVs?
We do. All the bars will have TV. We try, depending on the time of the game, maybe setting it up outside if it's plausible. But yeah, it's a great event. Lots of German beer, lots of German food.
I think Notre Dame's on at 11 that morning, so.
Oh, okay.
I don't know who plays at night, but.
Um, one of our managers is a very big Notre Dame fan, so it will be on at least inside all the TVs.
All right. Thanks, Candace.
Thank you.
I can't make a motion, but I'm certainly supportive of this great event and looking forward to getting up there. Got a motion and a second, row call.
Roe. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Melton.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items nine through 11 can be considered together for West Roads Re-Plat 6, located at 707 North 102nd Street and 10,000 California Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items nine and 10 are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat. Item 11, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
I'll open the public hearings for items numbers nine through 11. Are you the applicant proponent?
I'm not the applicant, but I am here on behalf of the applicant, Lana Bayless with DLR Group, 6457 Francis Street, Suite 200. And I'm just here in case the board has any questions.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm supportive of these items today, the preliminary plat and final plat and subdivision agreements. I would just say, Ryan, I appreciated our conversation and briefing on this last week. West Roads has been a great asset for the city and continues to be. I think it has bucked the trend of many traditional malls across the country in doing so. So we appreciate all your efforts and your work and it benefits that entire area and certainly the entire city tax base. And I think these items today will smooth the way for additional progress and I think some additional investment in the area. So pleased to support it and I'll motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, no further lights, row call.
Roe. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 12 through 15 can be considered together for Jackson Street Edition, located southwest of 29th and Jackson Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone this property from R8 District to TOD2 MUR District. Item 13, an ordinance to rescind the ACI overlay district. Item 14, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 15, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
I'll open the public hearings for items numbers 12 through 15. Is there any proponents here today? Good afternoon.
Justin Inzinger, 16934 Brown Street, Omaha, Nebraska 68116. Civil engineer on the project here on behalf of the owner, just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Row call.
Roe. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Melton.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone property located at 5108 Reed Street from R2 District to R4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial of request for rezoning to R5, but approval of request rezoning to R4, be his communication in opposition.
This item was postponed from the July 29th meeting. The public hearing was closed. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Goodwin, your light's on, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is the developer here for this project? If you could approach the podium, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. We will need you to state your name and address.
Freddie Ellis, 2196 Parker Circle, Omaha, Nebraska.
I just had a clarifying question. As you know, last week I had some concerns that there were, that public engagement had not taken place with the neighborhood and that there was also a letter sent by the city because the property was overgrown. Have you met with the community and/or the neighbors of that area?
Yeah, so Friday afternoon, I just wanted to make sure after like 5:00 PM, once people had gotten off from work, that I walked through the neighborhood. I delivered letters to all the addresses, I believe it was 13 properties, within 300 feet of where I plan on developing. So dropped off letters to the people at those addresses. Those ones that I didn't answer, I just left it, you know, in their door. But I did talk to a few neighbors as well and the grass has been cut as well.
And you understand, as a property owner, it's important that even during the process of developing, that the property is maintained?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion? Motion and a second, row call.
Roe. Festerson. Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item 17, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow transitional living in the R7 District located at 140 North 39th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
I will open the public hearing on item number 17. I believe the applicant is, I had Zoom written on here. You're not by Zoom, are you?
I'm not by Zoom.
You're pretty good then, Mr. Levy. Good afternoon.
Technology's gotten really good, AI. Yes, in many ways. Enough of that. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnum Street, on behalf of the applicant, Mental Health Association of Nebraska. We've got Casey Parker and Ryan Posposel here with me as well, with Mental Health Association of Nebraska. The request before you is for a special use permit for, to allow transitional living at 140 North 39th Street. The applicant has done a lot of outreach. They have joined the Jocelyn Castle Neighborhood Association on kind of a lifetime membership basis. Mr. Posposel in particular has attended those meetings regularly. He informed me before this meeting that, in fact, the Neighborhood Association intended to write a letter of support, but to do that in a formal way like this, they needed a board action and they weren't able to get that board action done in time. But other than that formality, the Neighborhood Association is supportive. You also have letters of support in the file from a couple of members of the Lincoln City Council, where Mental Health Association of Nebraska has operated similar facilities successfully for many years, a representative of the Lincoln Police Department, and Senator Terrell McKinney, State Senator Terrell McKinney as well. Last thing I want to add, and we're certainly, of course, happy to answer any questions the council might have. We did also apply for reasonable accommodation and the planning department concluded and the planning board agreed unanimously that the residents of this facility do qualify for reasonable accommodation due to mental health and substance abuse issues. What that means, that's a term or a concept that comes out of Federal Fair Housing Law and Americans with Disabilities Act, also a federal law. And essentially what it says is that local jurisdictions cannot impose their own laws in ways that would make housing for people who qualify for reasonable accommodation difficult, more expensive, impossible. We, I think there's an argument that the reasonable accommodation, if taken to its full extent, would mean that we wouldn't need to go through this process. That's not something that we're arguing or want to argue because we want to go through this process. We want to work with the city and the city council. Where we did argue in particular the reasonable accommodation, there's a requirement in the zoning ordinance that these facilities be a half mile from each other. There's one of these also facilities classified under the same land use, .47 miles from this one. So we're talking a matter of like 150 feet short of meeting that requirement. We've been to the Zoning Board of Appeals requesting a variance from the half-mile limit for the .47 mile proximity and the Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals did grant that variance a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. That's really all I have. Again, we're happy to answer any questions. We would appreciate your support. Ms. Parker and Mr. Posposel are here to answer any questions and we would appreciate your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, now I got this right, the opponents are on Zoom. So Mr. Elkin, can you hear us? Good afternoon, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
We hear you just fine.
Yeah, I just mind more of a curiosity in how many occupants there will be.
Can you give your name and your address for the record for us, please?
Yeah, I can't remember, is this my 40th and Cummings Street property or my 40th and Dodge Street property? I just don't remember which one this came from. My address is 999 South Logan Street, Suite 300, Denver, Colorado, 80209.
Thank you. And we'll get to your question you were asking about staffing. Is that what you had asked?
Occupants and staffing during the graveyard shift.
We'll get to that, okay, for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents here today or by Zoom? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Levy, can you come back up, please?
Absolutely. Again, David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnum, on behalf of the applicant.
So I believe his question was, how many occupants will be at this location?
Yes, a maximum of eight.
And how about staff members? Will there be around the clock?
There will be staff trained, licensed staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week, ranging between one to two overnight and sometimes as many as four during the day. But always at least one, sometimes as many as four.
Okay.
And then, is that the similar size as there was in Lincoln?
Introduce yourself, name and address.
Good afternoon, I'm Casey Parker, 1500 South 70th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska 68506. Actually, just a correction, the staff aren't certif, they aren't licensed. They are certified in what we call intentional peer support. It's a national certification. We get a lot of other training in addition to that. The house in Lincoln is 20 bedrooms, 14 bathrooms. So the one in Lincoln is much larger.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents to this item number 17? Seeing none, Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I discussed this before, but what I would like to do, I think that Casey and Ryan and I think your organization does a great job. But what I want to do is make sure that we're granting this special use to you and you only. If you choose to sell it to another organization, I would like them to have to come back in front of the council to request a special use. It doesn't mean that we won't necessarily grant it, but I think we want to make sure that when you do have this and, you know, in the community, that we have good operators. And so I'm going to make, and so I guess I mean this as a compliment to you when I make this motion. I want to move that we amend Exhibit B and add a fifth condition, that this permit shall be specific to this applicant only and shall not run with the land. This permit would become void upon change of ownership of the site and would require a new application. So I'm going to make that motion.
You got a motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Levy.
I just confirm for the record that the applicant has no objection to that amendment. Thank you, Councilwoman Melton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levy.
Thank you. Did you have anything else?
No, I have.
Okay, thanks. And I'll comment, Mr. Levy, you and I met a couple of months ago on this. We talked about it. I know you've reached out to the Jocelyn Castle Neighborhood Association and the one person that opposed it, can you come up briefly? And that conversation, when there was opposition in the planning board, you had a conversation with that party?
Yes, there was one gentleman who spoke in opposition at the planning board hearing. He owns a house that he and his wife are selling across the street. Tessa Dominguez with Mental Health Association of Nebraska, who was here at that hearing. Her son had a baby last week in California, so she's out with her new grandchild and is not here. But she did meet with that gentleman for probably 15 minutes outside in the hallway after that meeting. And my understanding is she had at least one follow-up phone call with him as well. And we've not heard concerns since.
Thank you. And I, this is in my district and I appreciate the communication you've done and Ms. Dominguez as well. I'll be supportive of this today. And so we have a motion and a second for a motion as amended. Am I correct? Motion to amend. So row call.
Roe. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Motion and a second, row call.
Roe. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item 18, a resolution to approve the Brando Town Homes Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1303 South Park Avenue in an amount up to $227,845.
I will open the public hearing on item number 18. Don, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. One moment. Okay, Don Seaton, City of Omaha Planning Department, Brando Town Homes. This is a seven-unit row home project being built on a vacant site. The units will be workforce rentals. They're part of a larger development. We approved the Popleton East Affordable Housing Project for TIFF last February, 51 units. This rectangle is the seven-unit row home. And this larger outline, the blue dash, that's a parking structure. They'll serve for both the townhomes and a future 63-unit affordable housing complex. This project is a $3.3 million investment in the neighborhood. TIFF support is $227,845. We ask for your support.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today on item number 17? I'm sorry, item number 18.
Yes, Cheryl Garst, Income and Housing Development Corporation, 1340 Park Avenue. Small but mighty project. Again, we received a generous award from the Department of Economic Development where we had to carve out these seven units. And this was explicitly developed based on neighborhood input to match the Park Avenue feel with that row house look, with the duplex look and three-bedroom units. So we find this project very desirable by the neighborhood, but also very difficult to cash flow. It only leverages about 15% of a permanent bank loan. So we did the rest on, again, fundraising through the state and private philanthropy. Here to answer any more questions.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents on item number 18? Seeing none, is there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. Thank you for limiting our time today. I'm against TIFF, particularly for this area. This one, particularly row houses, row homes. Kid, are you kidding me? They're not affordable. They're in the 400, $500,000 range. And usually have a well-known realtor's name attached to them. Who got fit TIFF financing? Didn't cost him anything because it includes the cost of acquisition. You're pulling the wool over the citizens' eyes and then taxing them for it. Don't tell me that you will not tax the people that live in that neighborhood, that you're only going to tax the owner? I doubt it. Everybody's property tax goes up because of it. And some people are moving out because of it. My two minutes are up, but basically this sounds like socialism to me. Workforce housing, affordable housing. You're putting, you're trying to pull the wool over our eyes with that kind of language. This is a giveaway for real estate companies, basically. That area is not blighted, it is not severely blighted. We, the citizens, elected you. We did not elect you to do this, to give away stuff to everybody. If you're going to give it away, give some to me too. I can't afford my house now. Will you give me TIFF financing for that? I doubt it.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents here to item number 18? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. This is in my district. Cheryl, thanks for all the work you've done on Park Ave down there for In Common. This is going to be a great development down on Park. Is it Popleton and Park Ave?
Yes.
Yeah, right in the corner there. And the affordable units are desperately needed as this council and this city knows. So this is just another dent that we're putting in that to try to turn the tide on that. So I can't make a motion on this, but I'll be supportive today. Motion and a second, thank you. No further lights, row call.
Roe. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve the Central at Columbus Park Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1014 South 20th Street in an amount up to $5,352,710.
I will open the public hearing on item number 19. Mr. Seaton, good afternoon.
Oh, yeah, good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning. This is another affordable housing project, a pretty large project. It'll be built on three vacant lots on South 20th Street. Be a large, new, seven-story apartment building, 156 affordable rental units. Project funding includes low-income housing tax credits and a loan from Front Porch. So, all the residents will be income-qualified households. Developers, the Anix Group, managed by Kyle Bach. Total investment is about $57, $57.8 million. They're asking $5,352,710 in TIF. It's a good project. It'll provide additional housing that's needed. We ask for your support.
Thanks, Don. Is there any other proponents here on item number 19?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmembers, Bob Griffith, 11440 West Center Road, here on behalf of the applicant. Thank you, Don, for the summary. Appreciate your help as always. Here to answer any questions that you may have, but I think the project is explained already, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here on item 19? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. This is another affordable housing development in my district. Quick question for you. How long has that been of, like, a vacant lot there, just south of Leavenworth where this is going?
You know, I'm honestly not sure.
Okay, it's been a while, I think.
I know it's been, they've had it for a while, and it's been in the works. But yeah, I don't know the exact number of years, but...
And I know, so is it 156 units? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. And it's seven stories, but two are parking, bottom two, and the sixth is partially buried, so it's mostly five stories above ground.
And reading the plan, so there's going to be a nice courtyard here?
That's correct, yes. Nice courtyard. We did get a parking waiver, so we have a good amount of bike storage.
Right.
And then, all the parking is contained within.
Yeah, this is, again, another much-needed affordable development, housing development in the city and in my district, and it's much needed and appreciated, so...
Thank you.
I'll be supportive of this today. Is there any other comments, councilmembers? Need a motion in a second. Motion in a second, roll call.
Roe, Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 20, a resolution to approve the Chambers Court Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located south of 18th Street and Willis Avenue in an amount up to $4,776,056.
I will open the public hearing on item number 20. Mr. Seaton.
Oh, yeah. Chambers Court, this is a very large and ambitious affordable housing project. It's in an area of North Omaha that really could use the attention. It's an eight-site project, all in the vicinity of 18th and Willis Streets. Be developed over the course of four phases. In total, there will be 205 residential dwelling units. I'm short of breath, in all honesty. I've got some respiratory issues, and sometimes I run short of breath. Please be patient.
You're doing just fine, Don.
In total, there'll be 205 residential apartment units and one commercial building of about 8,600 square feet. This is a mixed-income project. It'll be both market and affordable rental units. 74 units will be market rate, 131 units will be Lytec units, affordable. Most of this involves new construction on vacant parcels, but we're also seeing the rehab of some very nice historic buildings. Developer of North 16th Housing LLC, managed by Hoppy &amp; Sons, managed by Jake Hoppy, pardon me. He's done projects in Lincoln similar to this. Very, I say ambitious project, four phases, eight sites. Total investment is over $54.1 million in North Omaha. TIF support is $4,776,056. It's a good project and consistent with the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today on item number 20?
Thank you again, Mr. President. Councilmembers, Bob Griffith, 11440 West Center Road, here on behalf of the applicant. Here again today is Mr. Jake Hoppy with the development, and Lysia Goodwin with Hoppy &amp; Sons, there here to answer questions along with myself. Thank you again, Don, for explaining the project. We're very excited about it. He said it's very ambitious. I think it's interesting, a new way to go about mixing affordable housing with some market rate, kind of together and melding that in the same area. I want to make note of the kind of extensive community outreach that the applicant went to for this project. Started last year. They had community forums, they did neighborhood canvassing. I think they went above and beyond to try and understand what the community wanted and what they were hoping to see, kind of share what their vision was as well. So, I wanted that to be noted. So, with that, with any questions you may have, we're happy to hear them.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today?
Jake Hoppy, 840 Fair Acres Road. Just wanted to comment, we did bring forward a rather complex TIF application covering four different phases of the project. Part of the reason we did that, three of those phases are sponsored by us. One of the phases is sponsored by Mr. Don Curry, who's a developer in North Omaha. And so, part of our work here was hoping to facilitate the development that he's sponsoring of six units, which drove us to look at a multi-phase TIF application, which then, once you kind of go down, the complexity usually expands. But that was the intent of trying to bring all these phases together before you at one time was helping facilitate his process along with our own. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents to item number 20? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodwin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hoppy, if you could approach the podium again.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for investing in North 16th Street. As you know, the neighborhood needs a little life, and so, I think bringing back 205 mixed-income affordable housing units is important. There's a mention of the commercial building. Do you have programming for that space yet?
We don't yet. We have been in conversations with some different groups. We've had them through, but we don't have anything to announce, nothing formal.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to mention that I love the idea of a larger developer partnering with a smaller developer like Don Curry. He's already done some successful units in the similar area. Many times, people within the North Omaha community want to ensure that minority developers and/or construction workers have opportunity, and so, I think this is a great example of how a partnership like this could work. I also think mixed-income affordable housing is essential for the area because you have to bring back, you know, folks who not only need housing, but people with a spendable dollar, so that you can also attract services and amenities to the area. So, very interested in what that commercial building might hold because, as you know, there's a need for grocery. There's really a need for everything in that corridor.
Thank you. It's a very cool commercial building, and it's open space, unusual in that it's one large, open footprint. And so, while we don't have anything to talk about right now, I'm optimistic that once, especially once the rest of the development is catalyzed, it'll be more attractive to move someone in there and find a good use.
Further, I appreciate your proactive outreach, and we talked about, which you'll probably hear me say a lot when developers come into, especially the northern part of my district, how they can expand not only the community engagement that you started, but small projects that can help uplift in a small way, cleanups, you know, supporting, maybe, you know, helping to fix a neighbor's fence. I mean, it can go a long way to ensure that the rest of the area gets some TLC as new developments come in. So, I appreciate your willingness to support some additional initiatives in that area.
Yeah, absolutely. And it was nice that we've had the time to do a lot of community engagement and have conversations with the existing residents to help prioritize what we invest in for the property as well.
Great. I have no further question. If there's no other questions, I motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Roe, Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero. Goodwin abstains.
Thank you very much.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 21 through 23 were held on July 29, 2025. Is there any council discussion? Got a motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 24 through 32 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda number you wish to address, identify yourself with your name, address who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. I will open the public hearing. Are there any proponents here today, items 24 through 32? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Council discussion? Got a motion in a second. No lights. Roll call.
Roe, Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 33, an ordinance to approve and authorize an agreement with the University of Nebraska Medical Center for certain forensic and crime lab testing services.
I will open the public hearing on item number 33. Is there any proponents here today? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Captain Jennifer Russell, Omaha Police. I'm here as a proponent for item 33, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents on item number 33?
Good afternoon, ma'am. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street. I'd like to ask the Omaha City Council, or not ask a question, but my problem with this here is that when I was hired, passed the test to be on the police department in 1975, they wanted me to go to this forensic, and I said, "No, I'm not going to do that." But we would like to add some more money, because I thought about it over the years while I turned that job down. I believe we can also prove that there's some problem with fingerprinting and putting people in jail on false fingerprinting. So, we add some more money to this budget for that as well. I don't want to be a fingerprinter. I told, that's why I turned the job down. In the meantime, never mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponent?
Larry Store.
Floor is yours.
I'm sorry?
The floor is yours, Larry.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I guess since you let Donnie be off-topic on this, I'm going to be off-topic, too. And I think you folks need to consider that you're changing the rules that you started with today in limiting citizens to two minutes, et cetera, et cetera, doing whatever you can to keep us from the microphone or even being here. It's totally against the intent of the Open Meetings Act. I'm not going to spend my money or the citizens' money suing you. The Attorney General and the county attorney need to be down here to tell you people that you are out of control in relation to the intent of that Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Store, for the record, the light in front of you is a three-minute timer, and that is what we consistently have been going by. There is no talk of two minutes. It's been three minutes since I've been president of the council. It's three minutes, Larry. Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other opposition here on item 33? Public hearing is closed.
Item 34, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the city of Kearney controlling the distribution of keynote lottery proceeds.
I will open the public hearing on item number 34. Proponents? Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Bill Harvey, 11248, John Galt Boulevard, general counsel for Big Red Keno. And we're very excited about this opportunity for the interlocal agreement with the city of Kearney, and as are the officials in Kearney, they're very excited about this opportunity as well. So, thank you for your consideration of this matter. And I wanted to let you know also that one of the factors that swayed Kearney's decision to enter into this was the availability of our mobile app, which, as of yesterday, we have available at all Omaha keynote locations. So, we're very excited about that, and if you want to check it out, give me a holler, and I'm happy to give you a tour. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Is there any other proponents on item number 34? Seeing none, is there any opponents to item 34?
Yes, sir. Omaha City Council, Donnie R. Johnson, Ms. Goodwin, doing a wonderful job, ma'am. In the meantime, the Johnson Question Foundation and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I just oppose that, could we take some of this money and also give it to the police to figure out this fingerprinting problem?
Thank you. Is there any other opponents to item 34? Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 35 through 51, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and our vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Motion to adjourn.
Nope.
Oh. Did you say no? Oh, right. I was, I was almost good today.